To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take role.
Mr. Bickowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonnerati. Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi. Mr. Fatoulas.
Here.
Oh, I apologize. Ms. Filiagi is here by phone. Mr. Fatoulas.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam. Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary. Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton. President Katina.
Here.
If 10 members present at the moment.
Thank you. Before we begin proclamations slash certificates, we have a special guest here tonight. I'd like to introduce him and give him a few moments to offer his any anything that he has to say. Warden Wingard, would you like to come up?
I appreciate the opportunity, sir. I'm Trevor Wingard. I'm the probably heard new warden down at the Allegheny County Jail. I just want to introduce myself. Just talk briefly about my history. I worked in corrections my whole life, really, in the State Department of Corrections at several different facilities. They were very different, all of the ones I worked at supervised, from a line staff member up to the end of my career with the state where I supervised, I think, about 10 facilities, large facilities, small facilities. I retired two years ago, then I found out about the Allegheny County Jail having this position available. So here I am a few months after I found that out. So looking very much forward to working with this council, working with the jail oversight board, working with everyone involved with every stakeholder that has anything to do with that facility. I started yesterday. It's been a really good two days already. It has been. I mean that. That's what I like to do, which makes people chuckle sometimes, obviously. So I know a lot of folks have heard and read about that facility for many, many years. I have too. I was there. I was there in 2010 as the interim warden for a while. If all those things that we heard and read were true, I wouldn't have asked 15 years later to come back as the warden if all that was true. It's not all necessarily true. I invite anybody from the council, anybody who wants to ever come down, walk around, take a tour, show you whatever you want to show, go anywhere you want to go. It's a massive place. If you haven't been in there, it's easy to get lost in there. We won't get lost. I'll show you whatever you want to see, and we'll talk to everyone to talk to. My experience the last two days, the staff down there, they're really proud of that place. I mean it. They're really proud. They cannot wait to show me the stuff they're doing. And the people who are incarcerated down there, spent a lot of time with them, especially today. They have a lot of things they want to tell me about the facility, but the good news is none of them told me anything that is not correct, that can't be corrected fairly quickly. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You too. Councilmember Nakarati-Chapkus and myself had an opportunity to meet Trevor Wingard, is his full name. I just heard that to the side. Warden Trevor Wingard. We had an opportunity to meet with him last week and ask him some pointed questions. And I think Michelle and I both agree that he is exactly what that jail needs, and he's a breath of fresh air for the Allegheny County Jail. So again, I want to thank Trevor Wingard for coming out tonight and introducing himself. Obviously, it's snowy night, and some members are having difficulty in getting here, but we're going to go on with the meeting as best we can. So we're going to go into proclamations and certificates, 13371-25.
A proclamation proclaiming January 14th, 2025 is the 25 Club of UPMC McGee Women's Hospital Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
We have a few representatives of the 25.
125.
Right here.
Well, some people get in there. It sounds pretty mushy. Excuse me for a moment while I use visual aids. I want to get this right. It's an honor and a privilege to be here, and certainly it's an honor and privilege to recognize people for their assistance, their volunteerism, and what they do to make this region better. The 25 Club of Pittsburgh has been supporting the McGee Women's Hospital of UPMC and the neonatal research care and supplies for over 85 years. It's a long time.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Thank you. In the decade since 1939, 25 Club continues to epitomize how and why we provide support to McGee, the NICU, and all the babies in need. The legacy of the original 25 women that started out so very small and nonetheless made a huge impact will be the inspiration of members through the next 85 years. I hope you're all still here. Whereas the 25 Club of UPMC McGee Women's Hospital was founded in 1939 by the visionary Lillian Reese with the mission of supporting prenatal and neonatal care and advancing maternal and infant health through groundbreaking research. And whereas for 85 years, the 25 Club has exemplified dedication, philanthropy, and community spirit by contributing vital funds, that's always important, to UPMC McGee Women's Hospital and the McGee Women's Research Institute, whose work has transformed healthcare for women and children, not only in our region, but around the world. And whereas through this innovative programs such as the Cradle Will Rock, Salin the Park, and current annual fundraising events and its tribute to mothers, and interaction with the community through its website, the25club.org and social media, the 25 Club has created a legacy of impact, raising millions of dollars for state-of-the-art care and pioneering research. Whereas the 25 Club's steadfast commitment to supporting the health and the well-being of mothers, infants, and families has had a profound and lasting impact on our community, ensuring access to advanced medical care and fostering innovation and resonates globally. Whereas in this milestone year, the 25 Club celebrates 85 years of service, leadership, and philanthropy, inspiring generations to continue its mission of bettering lives and advanced medical research. And whereas today, the club has 25 members, nine lifetime members and two associate members. The executive committee of seven women include Michelle M. Franklin, Penny Holden, Christine Blouse, Natalie Hoffman, Laura Penrod-Cronk, Cynthia Caro, Danny Grego. Excuse me, that was it. The club members include Linda Bainbridge, Terry Bone, Stephanie Bozik, Jeanne Caligiri, Janet Campbell, Susan Fitzsimmons, Janice Hackett, Shannon Meramraz, Danny Joe McLean, Barbara Mendelwitz, Barbara Norris, Kathleen Patronas, Fay Sampson, Annie Simmons, Peggy Snaveley, Arlene Sokolow, Judy Waffington, and Heather Ziccharelli. Whereas with this, with the dedication of its executive committee and members, the 25 Club remains vital today because the fight to save premature babies and advance fetal research is never truly over. Therefore, be resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Bob Macy, do hereby proclaim January 14th, 2025, as the 25 Club of UPMC McGee Women's Hospital Day in Allegheny County. I extend my heartfelt congratulations and gratitude to the 25 Club for their unparalleled contributions and dedication to improving maternal and infant health, and I honor their enduring legacy as they embark on the next chapter of their remarkable journey. Would anybody else say something?
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of you. On behalf of the 25 Club, my name is Penny Holden. I'm past president. Our president was on her way today with five others. They were stuck somewhere on Bigelow Boulevard and apparently couldn't make it down. So on behalf of all of our 25 members, we do use this group of wonderful women, uses resources, uses contacts, and it's all for research.
Unknown participant is now joining.
And to better the lives of babies here in Pittsburgh and around the world. So we're happy to contribute to the research, and we look forward to another 85 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Come on, Sharon.
I'll just echo what's been said. We really greatly appreciate this recognition, and it will mean a lot to all the members of the 25 Club. So thank you.
Thank you.
Lifetime member.
Oh, that lifetime member. You're only 49.
Eighty-five years.
You're only 49.
Goodness. I'm Barbara Norris, and I am a past president of the 25 Club. It's been a joy to be a member of it. The friends you make. They mentioned the sale in the park. We used to have that in the museum building in South Park, and we turned that museum into a department store. We had Kaufman's Gimbel's Horns donating. And we had the mattress department. We had every department you have in a department store, and it was fun. And we all, that's where a lot of us made friends, and were introduced to the 25 Club through that.
Good. That's important.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you for.
Getting to know you.
Well, thank you for all your nice words. We appreciate it.
Well, we're going to take a picture. Is there anybody else from the 25 Club here?
I'd like to be a co-sponsor of the proclamation, please. Thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
Come on up.
All right, everybody ready? All right, ready. One, two, three.
Thank you.
There you are. Proclamations, we read into the record, 13373-25.
Actually, before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Mr. Bonnerati, Ms. Hallam, and Mr. Walton are now physically present. Mr. Paul Mary and Ms. Pritzio are with us via telephone. 13373-25 is a proclamation recognizing Eric Cusht for his heroic actions leading residents to safety after a fire in Verona, sponsored by Councilmember Fatoulas.
13374-25.
A proclamation recognizing Jim Rullo for his contributions to the Borough of Pitt Care, sponsored by Councilmember Nakarati-Chapkus.
Before proceeding to public comment, I believe Councilman DiMarco would like to make some remarks.
Mr. President, I just wanted to inform the folks here, as well as my fellow members on council, that I will be abstaining on all votes tonight. During the recess here, I took a role with Senator McCormick to be the southwestern Pennsylvania Regional Director, and to comply with Allegheny County ethics rules, I will not be voting on anything tonight. This will be my last meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman DiMarco. And you submitted, obviously, your letter of resignation. I have your letter of resignation, which we'll be accepting, obviously, this evening. So thank you. Public comment on agenda items?
We have only one. John Silvestri.
Hi again. I'm here to advocate your vote on a legislation to create some degree of autonomy with our Board of Assessment.
Could you move the microphone a little bit closer to you? Thank you.
I've been in many capacities in my 75 years, but I think what's important is that in 1975, I became a judicial law clerk in the Civil Division of the Court of Common Pleas. And in 1978, I became an assistant solicitor to the Board of Assessment. I held that position until I went into a formal retirement in 1998. And what I saw over the years was a slow but sure evolution of politics being injected into the Board of Assessment. When I first went there in 1978, it was truly, truly an independent quasi-judicial body that had integrity. The Board of Commissioners appointed the members, and all the advice that they were given was do a good job, follow the law, follow your heart. In the 1980s and into the 90s, that changed. We had injected a so-called Director of Assessments. Politics entered the decision-making process. I'll just skip to the most recent interference. The website that's run by the county, not by the Board of Assessment, but by the county, about the Board of Assessment, doesn't say who can file an appeal. I had to go to court in the last month for someone who was deceived by Allegheny County setting up a website that told people that they couldn't appeal when in fact they did. I got a court order last week. What I ask is that you vote for this because the Board of Assessment only has one official employee. It's totally confusing, not only for me, who's practiced for 47 years in this area of the law, to get an answer, to get a communication. If the Board of Assessment has its own employees, has its own control over how it does business, I think it's going to be a true public service. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now move on to the approval of minutes. 13375-25.
A motion to approve the minutes of the December 3rd, 2024, regular meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. 13376-25.
A motion to approve the minutes of the December 17th, 2024, regular meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions. Councilman DiMarco. 133, presentation of appointments. Both of the nominations presented this evening are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. I'd like the clerk to read both of them at this time.
13369-25 is approving the appointment of Lindsey Ritter to the Friends of the Park for Boys Park, for term effective through January 14th, 2028, sponsored by Councilmember Nakarati-Chapkus. And 13370-25 is approving the appointment of Grant Gitlin to the Allegheny County Housing Authority for term to be effective through December 31st, 2029, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
We'll now move on to unfinished business. Committee on Appointment Review for the second reading. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read all of the nominations that are before us for a final vote at this time, and then proceed with a single motion and vote on all of them. I believe that Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus will be abstaining from vote on 13322-24, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Jared, go ahead.
Okay. Almost all of these are appointments to the Housing Advisory Committee for term effective through January 14th of 2028. All are sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13322-24 is the appointment of County Councilwoman Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus. 13323-24 is the appointment of Dr. Noble Masseru. 13324-24 is approving the appointment of Bob Damewood. 13325-24 is the appointment of Dwight Bodorf. 13326-24 is the appointment of Megan Hammond. 13327-24 is the appointment of Sophia Bermeo. 13328-24 is the appointment of Sonia Tillman. 13329-24 is the appointment of John Katz. 13330-24 is the appointment of David Onifor. 13331-24 is the appointment of Charlize Smith. 13332-24 is the appointment of Jala Rucker. 13333-24 is the appointment of Devon Getz. 13334-24 is the appointment of Gail Schwartz. And the sole different appointment is 13341-24 that's approving the appointment of Emily Rostkowitz as a public director of the Allegheny County Conservation District for term effective through December 31st of 2027. That one is also sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
Yes, President Katina. The Committee on Appointment Review met on January the 7th, 2025, and affirmatively recommended these appointments, and I'd like to make that motion, please, with the notice that the abstention, as you referenced earlier.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions are Councilman DiMarco and Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
For 13322-24 for mine specifically.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Committee on Assessment Practices for the second reading. Before proceeding, I believe Ms. Filiagi would like to make a few remarks relating to bills number 13276-24 and 13277-24.
Thank you very much, President Katina and members of council. Yes, I would, as the record indicates, the Assessment Practices Committee is meeting on January 8th. And essentially, these two bills had their genesis a few months ago as the Assessment Practices Committee was thinking about ways of ensuring the activity and transparency of the assessment appeals process. Mr. Silvestri, our speaker today, reminded us of that and gave us some highlights from his perspective as to how that looks. And I'm not sure if everyone knows, although you brought this to light today, or is aware of, that at the moment, our Assessments Appeal Board, which we call BEPAR, has very little staff of exactly one employee, and that's Barbara Bald, though she's here today. And the board, therefore, relies on the assistance from staff in the county office of property assessment throughout the appeals process. As we discussed in the committee meeting, this is not the best-case scenario because appeal critics directly impact our tax revenues here in the county, and the county, therefore, has a vested interest in appeal outcomes. It's also less than ideal to have the very same employees who work on setting the county's assessed values involved in the appeals that they are attempting to change those values. So with these principles in mind, I think it's clear that making the appeals board more independent, as Mr. Silvestri suggested today, from the county is very important, and staffing is a critical component of that independence.
Sorry. Thank you. All, yeah, most people can, right? Altering the manner in which staff is assigned to the appeals board will allow the board to function as an impartial, quasi-judicial body, free from even perceived or unconscious influence from employees who also work for the Office of Property Assessments. I think it was very clear during the committee process that the participating members of council as a whole believe that this change will function to the benefit of all parties in the assessment-appeal process, and that it will foster both efficiency and appropriate respect to everyone involved. Since these bills were released from committee, conversations with the administration have indicated that it also understands council's desire to make the appeals board a more independent entity, and that the administration shares our goal of making the appeals process more objective and more transparent. Based on the discussions both with the administration and our own staff, as well as the bill's sponsor, Councilman Macy, it appears that a more effective means of implementing the appropriate staffing changes and independence may exist. I am therefore, at this time, President Katina, asking that these bills be referred back to the Committee on Assessment Practices at this time in order to allow further discussion and refinement of the original concept. Thank you.
Thank you. So 13276-24 and 13277-24 will both go back to the Committee on Assessment Practices. We'll now have liaison reports. Any liaison reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business ordinances and resolutions, new business motions. 13377-25.
A motion to the Council of Allegheny County reestablishing the Budget Transfer Committee in accordance with Section 805.03 of the Administrative Code, sponsored by Councilmember Palmasina.
President Katina, can I be added to that bill, please?
Yes. And myself as well, please.
Councilmember Palmasina?
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion reestablishes the Year-end Budget Transfer Committee. The committee consists of the Director of the Department of Budget and Finance, the Controller, and our own budget manager, and it processes dozens of transactions relating to each end of the year closure of the county books. We reestablish this committee every year and allows us to approve a single resolution for all of the year-end transfers, rather than a separate resolution for each one as they happen. The committee will cease to exist when the Controller fully closes the county books for 2024. I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And one abstention. Councilman DiMarco. Notification of Contracts, 13378-25.
Communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of December 2024.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
Receive and file, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We'll now have public comment on any general items.
We have one. Jan Dornich.
Jan, are you here?
No.
He's not here. So.
President Katina?
Go ahead.
Well, if we're moving on from there.
I was going to allow former members of council to have a.
Well, I just wanted to say something before then. Okay.
So do you want to, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Look, as indicated here earlier in the meeting, I'm resigning tonight. I'll be leaving. And I just wanted to say how it has truly been an honor to represent the residents of Allegheny County, trying always to do what is in the best interests of the taxpayers, businesses, and community organizations that make up this wonderful county. I've also enjoyed the camaraderie and friendships that I've made with my colleagues over the last nine-plus years here on council. I look forward to those friendships continuing as I move into my new role as the Southwest Pennsylvania Regional Director for U.S. Senator David McCormick. Every time I've been sworn in, I've been elected three times to be the at-large representative here on Allegheny County Council. I tell a story about when I was a kid, I used to come down to visit my grandmother. And my mom would bring me in to meet my grandmother here, and she worked for the county. My grandmother was a cleaning woman for the county. And I always talk about how proud she would be to see, as a cleaning woman, that her grandson sat here and helped negotiate and voted on $3 billion-plus budgets. In my time on council, I tried to do the best I can. I've disagreed with many of the folks here on council, but I've always tried to make it issue-based, never personal, never trying to, well, except for Bethany. She knows. She's smiling over there, but hey, you know, look, you know, she's in a whole special category by herself, okay? So let's be clear. But I'm honored that former colleagues have come here tonight, almost the last night for me in council, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, you'll be coming back. So this won't be your last meeting, technically. So you'll be back for your flight.
It's a month of Sam.
Yeah, it's a month of Sam. So I'd like to extend a moment of personal privilege to former council members Means, Kirk, and Baker, if they'd like to come up and say anything.
Baker gets the three-minute rule.
He gets the three-second rule.
Those liaison reports are very short tonight. So it's very nice to be back with all of you, and yes, we all miss it. And I will say, I made a little collage for Stanford tonight. And this first photo is actually our caucus 10 years ago this month, right? And that's the five of us that got along well. That's our whole group there from back in the day on council. And then I'll just share the last picture. At one point, the caucus was the three of us. At one point, the caucus was the three of us, and people would say, "How are the three of you getting along?" And this is a picture of a wedding that Sam officiated, that I was the best man, and I had just officiated Cindy's sister's wedding, and she was currently babysitting my daughter. And I will say, the camaraderie-
I was a guest at the wedding.
And you were a guest at that wedding. You didn't crash the wedding. But the camaraderie and friendships certainly that this team built together, the fact that Sam and Sue and Cindy and Denise helped throw a baby shower for me back in that room back in the day, it really did become like a family. And I've always thought of Sam as kind of the uncle of our crew, somebody that always to look up to and to admire and appreciate. A million years ago, I wrote a book called Get Involved, Making the Most of Your 20s and 30s. And I said to Sam one night via text, he had just done two leadership programs, got elected to three new boards, and I said that night, you know, Sam, like, you are truly the definition of making the most of your 50s and 60s. I remember 12 years ago, being with Sam in Eden Park out in North Fayette, and kind of figuring out, like, what is this guy going to do? Like, it seems like he's really excited to do this government and politics thing. And I would say, from that night at that Eden Park in North Fayette, what you have done has well exceeded anything that anyone could have ever imagined and achieved. There's 1.3 million people in the county. I think together, we met about 1.2 million, your friends, my friends, and it was a pleasure to, to get to serve with you. And I'll just say here tonight, this is a picture of us with Mr. Finnerty from back in the day, and we were there with the Stanley Cup Trophy. And I will say, the Penguins were champions that day, and to so many of us, Sam, you're our champion. So congratulations.
I want to thank Sam for serving our country as a Marine and stepping up to the, up the plate to serve us so wonderfully as our county councilperson at large. You've done a fantastic job. You've been a great spokesman, very articulate, very brave, and really, really smart. Thank you, Sam.
Come on.
You're getting more than just a Baker family collage here.
Step aside, step aside.
Cindy's got the good stuff for you.
Yeah. Well, Sam, in honor of everything you've done for the county, we produced a Samuel DeMarco III Allegheny County Council at Large from January 4th of 2016 to January 14th, 2025. This town is well over 130 years old. It, 1884, this building was complete, and the roof went on shortly thereafter. There were just a little under a half a million of these tiles on the roof. So in 18, I think all of us were here, and many of the council, we had the roof replaced. In the process, they saved some of the slates, which I was able to snag a few for the council and a few others. And just like to present this with you, there's a picture of the courthouse, the seal, and then a little history of the courthouse on the back describing the architecture. So don't break it. It's 137 years old.
Thank you. He's a full-on way-left person.
It's an original.
Thank you. Really do appreciate it, guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you.
Lovely, Sam. And now there's one.
I got collages and-
Yeah, you got collages. Is it okay to do a group picture with everyone?
Sure.
All right. Sorry.
All right. Come on. How about the rest of you? I have permission to stand with you. Hey. Say it. I'm the only at-large now. I've been wanting that my whole career, and it's finally happening.
First day lost, first day last, day lost.
I know, crazy, right? It's the best Christmas present. Yeah, hold it up.
Where's this, where's this? How do you find?
There we go. Yep. Come on in. Up on this side?
Not only is Tom the speaker, he's a choreographer.
There we go. All right, everybody. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
Yay.
You're welcome, Cindy.
I know, that's a lot of me. I like it. I'm good. I'm not my Nathan Expers anymore.
So at this point in time, is there a motion to adjourn?
President Katina?
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry.
I was just, do we need to formally accept Councilman DeMarco's letter?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Drive home safely.